Okay, we're good, alright. Good evening, I'm opening up the planning board for Thompson this evening, and can you please take the role?
I will, Dawn Span.
Present.
Carrie Bigfoot, present. Larry Brand.
Present.
Dan Flag.
Present.
Scott Withby.
Present.
And Ron Bissong and Joshua Spoonman have been excused.
Thank you. So we'll call me in order, enroll for minutes. Does everyone have an opportunity to see the minutes, and do we have a motion? I move that we accept the minutes of the September 8, 2022, as submitted.
Sure.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed, so it's unanimous, thank you. So, this, I'll just off this to the board. I'd like to suggest that we move item E ahead of the public hearing in the Felsbar project. If the board's okay, I need to choose myself for item B, and Scott's gonna officiate on that. Alright, so if the board's okay, that's what we'll do, we'll do the site plan approval extension, Scott, yours.
Alright, they'll do that from here, hopefully, so I can say too long. As we all know, this is for an extension, my question, we've moved over to islands for the for one of memory, the memory center, if I can remember correctly. And
It's a living facility.
Living facility, yeah. And the, they haven't started, they want to extend it for six, six months, like to March of 2023. Our town planner had to draw out a form item that was something that I had circled on the, the conditions of approval last time, and that was at the end. But final condition of approval was the proposed nevergreen circle of improvements shall be completed by November 1st of 2021. I think that was the discussion of public emergency access that the folks over at Highlands, Highland Green were concerned about. I would ask, Cap, that if you or, or Dawn could confirm that those improvements were completed? Or if the board wants to say we could extend it to November 1st, 2022? I know when we, when we passed this originally, the goal was to get that done well ahead of anything happening for, for the construction. I don't know if that's during, if you want to talk about that.
Just for clarifications, is the six-month extension, and you wanted the improvements completed by November 1st of this year, and not by, say, the in six-month terms?
Yeah, my, my understanding and recollection of what this was, was that it was for the, the citizens in Highland Green were concerned because there, there, that road was impassable. And the goal was to have it fixed and able to be an emergency access route, or escape route, in the case of fire and whatnot, on every green circle. And I, I'm pretty sure that it's completed the improvements.
Right.
But I
I didn't say that, yeah, I didn't see a reference in his letter, his letter requesting the extension. So it should just be flagged as something that, obviously, if it isn't done, it should be done as soon as possible.
And, and, yeah, and I don't think that we want to extend that to the March deadline, because it was something that they set up a a pretty, I mean, we saw this in the memo we stated the September, yeah, it's a year ago, September 9th of 2021, and we were, we asked for that to be done by November, so but it hasn't been done. He's making sure it's sent before, before when.
Is any discussion, or someone wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, I move to approve the request by Seacoast Management Company to extend the site plan validity of Highland Green Phase 4D, consistent living facility, to November 1, 2022.
I think the extend, extend the
Extended.
Extend it to March 9, 2022, with the expectation, the raw improvements in 2023, sorry.
Okay.
Have been, have done by November 1st of this year, if they haven't already been done.
If they haven't.
I'll, I'll accept that amendment to my motion.
A second.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor? opposed, show your hands.
Thank you.
And back to you.
And you need me to follow up on something on the line? Sure. Alright. We are now going into item D. Felsbar Ridge LLC has submitted a proposed subdivision for an 82-unit manufacturing housing park at 263 Lewiston Road, tax map R0550 34, and as my understanding, this is the preliminary subdivision application for the expansion of the existing Thompson mobile homes park at Andrea Street and Cory Lane, same tax map. So, please identify yourself and
My name is Craig Sheaton, Karen Irons, all right, everything, Felsbar Ridge. Film property located in north the existing Thompson local home park. With emerging lot 34, our five, it's in the residential district, mobile home park overlay. With the existing site has approximately 18.7 acres of wetlands. And then additionally, has about three quarters of an acre, LLC, which is located right in this, and then and we are proposing a 82-unit mobile home park with the extension off of Andrea Street and Cory Lane. It'll be four separate roads. Approximately 6,000 feet of roadway, the road to the new line, point for why, this means we put right away for the mobile home park standards. All their homes will be served by central statistics, the shared lots. We designed it with minimum square footage of 12,000 square foot per lot. And then the original proposal, we did not have this access drive cutting green, we worked with the fire chief. He requested we had a gravel access drive to connect both the roadways for, for emergency access, which we added additional 23 foot right away there for that. And we'll be posting for branch access only, so the main route for vehicle tra, for vehicle traffic is going to be coming back out to Andrea and Cory Lane. We had the traffic city revised, I sent it through to you, but it had updated, the original one had the 70, the original proposed, and it was updated 81, same, no issues with that. That'll be the final. Stormwater on site is supposed to be treated by four gravel weapons, showing the blue areas. And that'll collect, we're, we're gonna collect and treat 98% of the new impervious and 97% of the entire new development. And then we proposed the area in between, for this, the extension of Andrea Street, and what we have, they have a current road for this area, which can watch and perform open space with a wood chip trail for people to walk and there's some vegetation and stuff in that area. And then additionally, which is for water service, we're gonna there's been some wells on site, and then two of the services we run to the homes. Similar to what the first base has for, for water service. And there's gonna be a 50-foot buffer around the entire property, according to the standards, and I know there's some questions about your waters, so up to the north, vacant land, and then there's the central main power land, and then there's a subdivision up in this area. To, on the left of the screen, to the west is a body of central main power land. Then Felsbar Ridge owns everything to the east, 195. We believe that is the video we do for, and happy to answer your questions, you guys have.
Okay, I had a couple things, one is, you said 81, the study was updated, but
Oh, 82, yeah, yeah.
They, it is, sorry, it was both there, yeah, it was updated for the, we do this.
And I sent that over early, like, two, we got two days ago, so I didn't send it over, but I know when we made it to you guys, yeah.
I think we would like to hear, because if I understand right, reading through this, there's like three waivers, I think, being questioned, so we can talk to that a little bit more. I guess, why do you have this up, do you have another one showing them, then showing the butters behind, and where some of the other residential units are?
I actually have move over a second, pull on here. So you can see the bounds of the property, and then the butter. So up here, this is the parcel to the north, which is vacant land. And then there's a central main power strip of land right here, and then this other something, it's, it's up here, and other than that, neighboring area to the north is, is vacant land.
And so sort of pinkish color, that's the setback.
Yes.
Right, you have, you have setback, there's vacant land, power line, and then
Then
some on the other side.
Other side, essential main power, yep, and then to the there's 195, Felsbar Ridge owes this section of property all the way to here. And then to the west, it bucks right up against the other central main corridor.
Let me put this up. I can't read the code.
I think it's Jesse, 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 off on metal rails. On metal, yeah.
It'll be, it'll be pretty far away, the development.
And just help us with the other direction.
That's firehouse. Come on, cheer the mayor, right, communications. eventual area.
Alright. So, you have one question?
Sure. I was wondering, one, one item that was in here a number of times, is the systems.
Yes.
So by where, whereabouts of those can be located?
Yeah, so one will be right about here, and one will be in this area here, it's a little hard to see, and the other one will be here. We had a staff, and we sat down, the staff and fire chief, he was okay with it, he was okay with it, and we showed him the rates of 1,000 feet for
So it was able to
Yeah, it's all within, and he was okay with it, we'll resubmit it with that on their computer final, but we go with that, it was
You mentioned the trail network, you know, in between roads three and four.
Yeah, and it's about six acres in size in between there.
And of those primarily wetlands, or now it's got through there?
There's, there's a good chunk of wetlands, but there's also toward the center here, actually. There's a good chunk right in here, that's, that's just upland, and then there's a couple pieces up in the front here that are, that are nice upland areas as well, but there, there's a, a good chunk of wetlands in there, but kind of a good mix at the side. If you would come back over to the infernal pool, let me just get one, and just explain what you've done there.
Yep. Alright, this is in Jan, now as well.
Right.
Yep, so the general pool is right in here, and there is a small section right here that is within that 250-foot radius of it. It meets the threshold with the D E P standards, and the existing raids actually pitch towards the roadway as they sit now. There's a bridge right around here, so it is within the 250-foot, but the existing area doesn't drain to that infernal pool already, and it will continue to drain towards the roadway. So the, the actual water quality of the ground pool will, will not be affected at all, and it will not get any less water from from its radius there, but the habitat.
And does it primarily get its water from the wetlands to the north of it?
Yeah, there's, um, so it's kind of like, there's a ridge right in the middle here, but it's really just a land, like, yeah, it kind of just, everything kind of goes right to it, no, no outlet for it's not connected to any other wetlands in the site.
And in, in the memo, it also talks about a location of existing proposed snowmobile trails, is that there, there are some along this edge of the property, and mostly, there's a couple that run in the back of these lots are, but mostly it's outside the property line up here, and doesn't dig back in, around here.
So is the intent to revell some of those trails?
Yeah, we're gonna look into rewriting some of them, but we haven't gone too, too deep into that at this point.
Okay, but you feel on the property to the north there?
Uh, he doesn't own probably, yeah, someone else owns that one.
He owns
To the left, I was getting toward the But, I mean, it looks like with the 50-foot, if it was allowed in the 50-foot buffer space, space to push them up that way.
Are those the Thompson Trail Rider trails?
I'm not sure.
I can comment on that, Logan Capone from North Star Planning helped with the staff review. And yes, they are part of the, the trail, the Thompson Trail Riders Network, if you go on their website, there's a map readily available, and it shows some of the trails that go right through the site, so our concern and the staff's concern was just making sure that they're okay with wherever those trails will be relocated.
So, please identify yourself.
I'm Logan Capone, I'm a planner with North Star Planning. Our firm has been hired to assist the town planning staff with project review, as the staff handles transition and staff turnover. So I've helped with the staff's review of this project, I'm joined here tonight by my colleague Ben Smith, Director of Planning of North Star Planning. And
Okay, you get, we need, thank you. Anything else, Scott?
I just got one more question, that gets back to the memo, also, mentioned support, they consider requiring the advocate to depict existing vegetation to remain during an active construction, is that somebody gonna be able to be doing
Yeah, you see the, the lines, here we did add the, the vegetation lines, that was just it is on there now, we resubmitted that after the original memo, in response to comments.
Alright, great, because it has been one of the things we've been trying to do with more
Yeah.
plans, and you're, you're, these folks' neighbors in phase one probably understand that with the development that was done to the west of them. Something we're trying to do with these plants, to protect these properties.
And carrying, oh, you guys?
I'm, I'm looking at the, at the traffic, yeah, survey, and on that, you know, the survey that indicated that the number of traffic wasn't necessarily to get M dot U on, because the numbers were low.
Right.
With with vacay, because obviously, I mean, we're already talking about there are units already in there.
Yeah.
And I, quite honestly, I don't know how many there are. But it's that, if you can, I realize there's grandfathering, but if you combine the units that are there with the new proposed units, does that put it over the threshold for M dot? I believe you guys did that, but I would have to confirm to the traffic engineer for that, I don't, I don't know the numbers on that. I believe they did look at that, but I can confirm.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah, so, and I, I think I read this, but just, we're not talking to the street access or curbs, that's too
Correct.
196, everything's
Everything coming out Andrew Street and Cory Lane.
Yeah, alright, so, alright, cool, good.
Well, just, just a quick comment, piggybacking on what I asked for, about the Thompson Trail Rider, so has anybody talked to you guys as far as a representative from their organization?
No.
Because I just, I, I'm concerned, I know this group really well, I know they do a lot of good things in Thompson, they take care of the trails.
Yeah.
Um, all over the town, and I just want to make sure that there's some kind of a solution to the impacted trails, so that they're not just cut off.
Sure, hi, my name's Jamie Mann, I'm at Felsbar Ridge, I'm there, and I first purchased the parcel, I met with Thompson Trail Riders and went over the trail system and talked about maybe re-living some of them, so they've probably been aware for the last two, three years, that something might be in works like this, that down the road, we might have to rework some of the trails, and they knew that I'd worked with them on that, so.
I guess I just want to make sure there's a definite solution there, so that they don't get
Blindside, but
Yes.
Sure, yeah, nope.
And we can work on that, and we can submit in the final application for that.
That's it, can you talk a little bit, again, back to my original comment, if I read again correctly, somewhere in here, talk about three waivers, and you're explaining those.
Uh, we have not requested waivers at this time, I know there were some discussions about possibly three waivers for the dead-end standard. But then we connected with the gravel drive, so I wasn't not quite sure where that standard, we're here with the staff on that, but we haven't been quite so many waivers yet.
Okay.
I would, I would expect that the two lollipops and stuff to have a waiver.
Yes, exactly, so the direction from the staff is to submit, so the access road made you guys client with the the requirements of the waiver, so you still have to request the waivers for the lollipop that I'm as part of, and the direction from Kate and staff has been to submit those waivers with the final plan submission.
I, I, I agree, I think that's the way I would have understood it, but, yeah. So, and I don't know how that ends up being three, but I'll let you figure that out.
I, well, we referred to the mission, we didn't have that connection, so I think it was probably that hammerhead was the very, would be intended that, so now we have that connection, and bring that into the plans, things we're saying.
Okay, and I think, so, and you don't have to make, I guess these roads are the town standards.
Yes, yeah.
But the crossroads there is not
It's going to be a gravel access drive, like a substantial, like a fire truck to get through.
Yeah.
It's gonna be more of like an emergency access style, we're gonna post it, we'll give you no gates, but we're gonna post it as an inter but it'll, it'll be capable of taking any vehicle traffic that will need to be on in case of emergency.
I think that makes for three. So you think that's the
I think that the hammerhead of the two lollipops, maybe for three, I don't think that probably not to town standards would then count.
Count, right, yeah, but again, I'll let you guys figure that out.
Yeah, that's your
That'll be maintained, even though it's a gravel drive, and it's still being maintained.
It will be, yeah, it'll be plowed all winter long. Just as much as the regular road will be maintained, same.
Yeah. Alright, other questions from the board?
But for, but for right now, you're not planning to have those roads submitted for town acceptance.
Correct, yeah, it'll be private votes, probably.
Okay, not, okay, I was gonna just open up the public, fine.
One last one, just, uh, just to go over the sewage, as far as at one point, I was talking about Central Point, but I think you were mentioning, I think the plan show that this is going to be maybe shared, these fields between
Will be, will be centered between the lots, lots of
That's what that darker color on the plants that we saw.
Yes, we are red, yeah, so it's no building, and the, the, room of the coal stack, all of them, right, that will have a central one, and that will be a ring property.
Okay, that'll be clearly discussed and shown in the file, okay. That's all, yeah.
Okay. So, I guess before I open up the public, Logan, you have a presentation for us on behalf of the town?
That was everything that was covered, I was just kind of gonna let Craig and Andy, the applicant, lead the way and step in, but you guys kind of went through all the questions that I had highlighted in the memo, so I think I'm good on my end. Unless, Ben or Hop, you have anything to add?
I mean, they have, before I open up, well, still, after we close, public members, any comments, or questions you want?
Uh, no, no, you know, I concur with, you know, as a member of Logan has prepared on the half of the town of the town is good with this application, with the caveats raised by the board.
Thank you, alright, so are you done?
I'm all set.
Okay. Now it's up for any public comments, questions, or concerns, do we have any public members on Zoom that we need to, anybody raising their hand?
Cheers.
Oh, of course.
We're gonna make it bigger, bigger, we have no attendees.
Okay, so anyone here that would like to say anything? Alright, I guess I'll ask one more time, any public questions, comments, concerns, anything that one, anyone wants to address? And you have confirmed there are no attendees.
Correct, only the people.
Alright, hearing none, and then I close the public hearing. Okay, so this, again, if I understand correctly, is for preliminary subdivision application, and Scott, I think you have a pattern motion in here.
I do, I have some questions on the pattern motion in there.
Yeah, but again, let's take any more questions from the boards or comments, and then
What, you're the one who thought of
I'm sorry, I, I've definitely gone on the pattern, go ahead.
Thankfully.
No, that's fine.
I mean, the main thing with that motion they have is that most of the findings of facts that are in here are some of the things we've discussed, and are more kind of items for discussion than, than findings of fact, or things that, that we, we asked based on these. And also the, the conclusions of law, and we're gonna do those, we need to get, go down and get answers to these things. I'm not, I'm not gonna make a motion to remove on conclusions of law that have will and will not, but I don't want to read them, but
I agree, I would include them in the, the motion.
And I'm not sure we need to for
Not for I don't think we need the preliminary, I, and, and I, I circled that, and I forgot to mention conclusions of law, I think we need some input as to quote will or will not, right, not will slash will not, whether that's you or the town, the town attorney or whatever, but I don't think we're going to we're not gonna do conclusions of law, we need guidance on that.
That'd be, that'd be the final, right?
Yeah, that's what I think.
In, in the majority of these you know, as long as it is the will not, are, are, are similar to our usual findings of fact. Okay, that, you know, gross subdivision. Will, in this case, have fishing water available, et cetera, so, yeah, once we get those set, we can find it back.
Right, but I guess my only point is, none of us here are Josh is the attorney, he's not here today, but none of us are attorneys, and even Josh wouldn't especially illegal, especially, wouldn't do a legal opinion, we need this to be answered, not to be, and, and if there's something that does pop out, we need to know why. And so
I think the suggestion
Did that address that, okay?
You did, and I think the suggestion motion is more aligned with what we typically do for preliminary plan approval.
That's fine. That's fine. Okay. Any other questions, comments, or anything for?
For the water supply side of things, obviously, you're gonna look at drilling wells.
Yeah.
So the existing park has wells.
Correct.
Um, how many wells are there?
One.
Okay, and it is, um, and it is a public water system, right?
Yes, it is.
So are you a licensed operator?
Yes, I am.
Now, does it be, will the expansion of the park somehow change the designation and the current classification of the water system?
No, they're still classified as a very small water system.
Okay.
Uh, I might have a different designation number because I will operate it as a.
Be a separate entity.
Yeah. Um, so I'm adding on getting another, uh, license number and have separate testing, which you would for. Any number of wells.
Okay.
Um, what would classify that as anything over seven sites with major even one of them.
Now, have you, um, have you tested your existing well for P test?
That's the summer, yeah, and they're, we're testing this year for that, yeah, that's new, that's new.
Yeah.
Right after that, they went to P pass.
Right.
So, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so just, there's something to be aware of.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, good.
Anything else from you guys before we?
No.
Alright, I guess I will entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to, uh, find the preliminary plant subdivision for. Don't, don't start ridge LLC for tax map R five, lot thirty four, complete in regard to the application checklist and. In importance with one ninety one, three, one ninety one, five, or toxic code, with the following conditions. Listening to three conditions in the memo dated. September fourteen.
Okay, now, just for purposes such as those three.
Yeah, thank.
Alright, we have a second. I'll start you down, should I, any discussion? Seeing them all in favor. All opposed, so it's unanimous. So before you leave, um, we cancel because of the the weather today, uh, does the board want to do a sidewalk? Uh, before final.
Okay. I don't, I don't generally think I need to, um, but I probably go either direction.
Alright.
We've, I've been on a number of these trails in the past with my kids.
Okay. Alright, well then, uh. Then we will not be rescheduling the sidewalk. Alright, anything else? Alright, then I will move for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. So.
All in favor, well. Sorry, I think you want to get out of here, right? All in favor. In the opposition, no, right. So moved, we can adjourn, thank you all.